Order at 7:01. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start meeting with the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda? Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the agenda is approved. Onto approval of open session minutes from January 9th, 2017. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from January 9th, 2017.
Any discussion? Anything seem okay? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the open session minutes from January 9th, 2017 are approved. We'll hand over the floor to you for student comments.
So today, January 23rd, term to report course will be posted to iParents as the term ended on January 21st. And tomorrow, we have the Breakfast with the Counselors. The School Counseling Center will hold a breakfast for parents at 8:00 a.m. in the PDC. This new installment of their Breakfast with Counselors series will be available to parents of students in any grade. The focus of the workshop will be attendance and student success. They will discuss the point of attendance, NIPMOC's attendance policy, and strategies for maintaining and improving your students' attendance record. And on the 27th, we have the Italian field trip, in which the Italian students will travel to Boston to attend the Da Vinci exhibit at the Museum of Friends and lunch at Italy, the largest Italian marketplace in the world located in the Prudential Center. And on the 28th, we have Mr. Nipmoc. The annual Mr. Nipmoc competition will take place in the Nipmoc auditorium from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Seven male members of the class of 2017 will compete in a talent show to win the title of Mr. Nipmoc and two free prom tickets. Cost of admission is $5 for students, $7 for adults, and concessions will also be available. Very fun event. And on the 31st, we have the STEM and Humanities Scholar Meeting. The next meeting of the Nipmoc scholars will be held at 6:00 p.m. at the PDC in Nipmoc. Mr. David Alpine White, educator and Nipmoc tribal council, will lead a discussion on workplace diversity and respect. Students are submitting their civics projects on the 31st, and Mr. White is excited to engage with the scholars regarding their project proposals.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, moving right on to superintendent's comments. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Throw a different glasses. Community comments, does anybody from the community wish to say anything? Okay, moving right on.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. You have in your packet, as I've done virtually the last four years, the action plan document which you approved back on September 12th, with status updates for each of our five goals and all of the key action steps. Instead of going through it, you know, each key action step by each step, I will just kind of give an overview of the five goals. In my opinion, I think the district is progressing nicely for where we are, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, today's officially day 90 of the school year, so I think we're exactly at the halfway point. So if you recall, five primary goals. The first goal was around use of common assessments to improve teaching and learning throughout the district. And as I say in the background notes, I think we've made good progress at the elementary level as far as coming to concurrence in using common assessments, particularly with the bank of assessments that the Reading Wonders and the Go Math programs have. There's greater use of online assessments, particularly with regard to the Go Math program. And work is also continuing in earnest at the middle school and the high school as far as coming to concurrence on teacher-created, performance-based classroom common assessments. And I did make the notation that part of this is mandate, but I think our staff has done a commendable job in developing a second student learning goal this school year as part of the eda val process, one that's related to the use of common assessments. So I think some good progress there. The second goal around the development review and the revision of the curriculum. A lot of this is the work that Maureen is leading with regard to our curriculum mapping process and the use of the online Rubicon Atlas tool. Pretty much across the board, we've completed stage one, and some quality work is going on in stage two that is specifically listing the assessments that are being used. I think the work that we still need to make further progress in is developing more opportunities for K-12 vertical articulation. I know some good work is being done, particularly at the middle school, in getting teams of teachers together that are teaching common content areas, but we really want to see more of that K-12 conversation occurring. Third goal around increasing and improving inclusion opportunities. I think we've made some significant progress with regard to working with teams of both regular and special educators on what are effective team teaching practices. This year, Dennis has established a formal mentoring program for, I believe, Dennis, it's five teams of teachers at Clough and Memorial. And I think some of the key actions you'll see us moving forward very shortly, particularly if you recall, one of the benchmarks is doing an in-depth analysis of the inclusion data. We've got about now three years' worth of data going back to the elementary level, so kind of seeing what difference has this new structure and these new inclusionary practices made. Our fourth goal, which is a key goal for us, and we've talked about it here at the school committee level, is kind of the planning and programming to meet students' social emotional needs, or SEL programming. As we've talked about before, it's been a major PD focus for the district. As a matter of fact, the November 8th PD day was solely around that as we had some great opportunities to connect with our other districts within the Blackstone Valley. We've had workshops on things such as social thinking, executive functioning, ADHD, and some work that we're really trying to zero in on is how we can do a better job with transitions, specifically grade four to grade five, and then grade eight to grade nine, and having our counseling staff and so on meet on a regular basis to talk about those transitions. We've had in the last couple of years opportunities to establish programs like Keys to Clef, What's the Buzz around Memorial. I know Anne Meyer has done some fine work with regard to parent coffee talks in which programming is specifically talking about SEL needs. I think we've also had some nice success in creating more partnerships, you know, with organizations like Family Continuity and Riverside Community Care, where we actually have those professionals coming into the school and providing services to our students in the school setting in addition to the homes. So we're going to continue that work and also do a formal evaluation on what additional SEL programming we need. Then the fifth goal, and to be quite frank, is a consistent goal that will always be in place, is what are we doing to improve communication, but also highlighting the best practices and achievements of our students and the school in general. As I talked about, we did transition right before the start of the school year to a new district website and are still transitioning to the new ParentLink mass email and mass calling system. And Dave Quinn, who will be presented to you very shortly, has really been a point person for ensuring consistency in the use of Google Classroom as one universal learning management system, and also providing opportunities for workshops and small group PD with regard to the use of the various Google applications. We will also continue to highlight best practices. You know, I didn't list this here, but you know, just on Friday, we had an outstanding session of professional development for neighboring districts on what the high school's been doing with regard to the 21st Century Learning Conference. We'll also have, I believe the date is March 30th is the date for the community iFair. I think it'll be our third annual. So through that and through ongoing use of social media, I think we have a fairly robust presence, both on Twitter and on Facebook. We'll continue to highlight best practices. So that's where we are. Does anybody have any questions regarding our action plan?
I have a little question.
Sure.
So you talked about the inclusion opportunities and figuring out a way to kind of analyze performance and see how it's being impactful. How about that same kind of analysis for common assessments to improve teaching and learning? Like finding out, because like, I always hear from parents how concerned they are about the level of testing and how many assessments kids are getting throughout the year. But in my opinion, it's worth it if it's helping educate our kids and it's helping them to learn and grow. How do we know? That's my question. If it's worth it.
I think, that's a great question. I think it's really kind of a two-pronged approach. I think we, the goal around stage two of logging assessments into Rubicon Atlas, I think that has got to be our central repository of seeing what do we have as a collective total of common assessments that are being used consistently and faithfully across all grade levels. So I think that's the first stage. And then the second prong of that would be working with the team of teachers that are actually administering them and seeing what the results are, and what are the results over time. And over time, I'm talking about a period of two years, three years, and four years. Because part of the goal, as you probably know, is how are you using those common assessments to make changes to either the curriculum or how you're teaching the kids?
Right, and it's how good those assessments are in the first place.
Correct.
In order to make sure.
And realize this, too, teams of teachers, when they're using those common assessments and they're getting together and looking at the scores of how their kids do, a lot of times they will make changes. You know, I don't want to necessarily say on the fly, but kind of on the fly in, for the next time around that they're administering that. Okay?
So I also wanted to ask, I remember you talking, Dr. M., about having the ability, when we get these mass emailings from the school, having the ability to kind of pick and choose what you want coming across your desk and what you don't want coming across your desk. I was just wondering how close we are.
We're very close. Realize we are one of only six districts across the United States that has chosen to do that, so we're kind of in a beta version. So I've been told by Blackboard, expect it to be rolled out within the next month or two.
And like you said, we'll just get kind of a baseline email that'll say, what are you interested in?
It'll basically be a baseline email which will give you a link to put in your email address, and it will be a survey of keyword topics that you'll be able to self-select.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, the second piece, per usual, you have in your packet the FY17, the year-to-date report of all of our expenditures and the operational budget. Jay, is there any line or lines which you'd like to highlight?
No, so far, everything looks really good, I think. Keep hoping that we don't get any snow, and it'll be even better in six weeks.
You just jinxed it.
No, no.
On January 23rd.
Okay, we'll see.
When did you jinx it then? I could be wrong, but January's got to be trending very high for temperature, right?
It's not in the budget report, I'm not trying to get that in the episode.
I can't comment on that?
No, budget, right now, I think we're in good shape. Everything seems to be right where it should be this time of year. Those questions? Pass away.
All right, that's what I've got.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee updates, budget subcommittee. The budget subcommittee met tonight. We elected a new chairperson and secretary. I was elected as chairperson. Phil is going to be our secretary for the budget subcommittee. We talked about looking for level service to continue to maximize efficiencies where possible. We also talked about the major drivers and anticipated revenue for looking at FY18. Okay, excellent. So I get the next piece, my happy, presenting the Golden Apple Award. I prepared some comments, but I think I'm just going to pop off the cuff a little. So when we, I love being able to present this award. This is the third time we're presenting this award. And I was just asking Joe to give me the number of nominations we've received each time. So this past, we've had three. So this past period, we received 40 nominations. The period before this was 50, and then the period before that one was 80. So I think when it was first launched, there was great enthusiasm, but I think for everybody, life gets in the way and things get busy. But I think 40 nominations is a lot of nominations, never mind 50 or 80. And as we were sitting around the table, the committee that is charged with selecting who our Golden Apple recipient will be, we just sit there reading all these amazing stories of impact and how staff, not necessarily just teachers, sometimes it's principals, sometimes it's the curriculum director. It, there's just so many people that are touching the lives of parents and students across the district, and it kills me every single time that we can't tell everybody the impact that they're making. So this is my little soapbox. I just would love it if people took a moment, even if you don't get a chance to write a nomination, because I would bet that for every nomination written and submitted, there's probably two more that never get written and submitted. And I speak for myself, because I had every intention of nominating somebody in the district this past nomination period, and just holidays were tough. But to encourage people to take a moment to say thank you to a teacher, a support staff, anybody who has touched your life, the life of your student. It could be a principal, it could be somebody who works in the cafeteria, whoever it is, that even though they're not getting a written nomination, that we're taking the time to appreciate people and really look at the good, because I don't know if I just speak for myself, but I don't think that I do, that when you take that moment to not take things for granted and appreciate those people around you, it does just as much good for you as it does for the person that you're expressing that to. So that's my soapbox for the evening. I just always feel like I just want to tell everybody about the impact that they're making because there's a lot of good going on in this district, and that's why I love this award. But tonight, I'll go on because we have one particular person that we're honoring and celebrating this evening. This award is an opportunity to acknowledge and applaud the contributions and difference that one staff member in the Merzey has made for students and parents. We ask parents every single nomination period to provide details of a staff member's performance and how it displays exemplars in understanding the needs of students and families, how their performance showed creativity, enthusiasm, and determination, how their role had a positive academic or social impact on students, and how they partnered with parents to achieve success. And then we also have a rubric that we use to kind of evaluate in all those different areas. But this nomination period, one story really stood out for us, helping us to know that this individual was not just going to school and doing their job every single day, but stretching themselves to bring programs to students and really help this teacher's students to learn. This person was actually nominated in past periods as well, so it's even more, it says that, you know, he's being recognized throughout these nomination periods. So as I've done in the past, I'm going to continue doing it kind of the way that I've done it before. I'm going to read some comments that parents wrote about this Golden Apple Award winner, so that this person has an opportunity to sit back, listen and really feel the impact that he's making, and hear the words of some very grateful parents. So I just ask you to engage with me as I read some of the comments that parents wrote about him. "This teacher is passionate about his subject matter and displays this to his students. He knows how to challenge them, helping them to get the most out of his time with them. He's serious about learning and helps to connect their work to real-world experiences. He's creative, not binding students to a specific way of learning. He's flexible and takes the time to pursue intellectually engaging topics that really make students think. He truly listens to his students, assuming that they are all capable of great things. He doesn't let them coast. My daughter has learned more from this teacher's class than any other class she has taken. It certainly would have been easier to teach the pre-assigned math classes for which this teacher already had plans, but this is not the path that he took. He researched and found new ways to bring progressive and innovative classes to Nipmoc students. It is this out-of-the-box-and-go-the-extra-mile kind of effort that is the hallmark of his excellence. He wanted his students challenged, engaged, and excited. Content comes alive in his classes, and students are invited to really engage with discipline, specific forms of inquiry, and knowledge building. My student looks forward to this class every single day. Things like communication, adaptability, problem-solving, 21st century skills, et cetera, are an integrated part of what you do in his class, not some extra assignments thrown in just to meet state standards. This past year, this teacher recognized the enthusiasm his class was generating and responded by working with administration to add an independent study in economics to capture that forward momentum. My son has never really been a big fan of math. When my son took this teacher's economics class, he discovered a whole component of math that he not only liked, but he suddenly found a subject that he loved enough to pursue in college. With the discovery of economics, the all-encompassing major in business suddenly had clear focus. My son went on to continue his studies of economics at college, and it was because of this teacher's enthusiasm and skill that this area of study was even on his radar." So all of these words are testimony to this teacher's passion, flexibility, motivation, and caring. "From the heart of this school committee and the greater parent population in the Merzey, it is with great joy and respect that we present the third Golden Apple Award to Mr. Robert Messick, teacher of economics at Nipmoc High School. And we thank you for all you have done for being a shining example of excellence in this district." So thank you, Mr. Messick. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you for the award, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Photo op.
Oh, photo op.
One more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Messick.
Oh, thank you. I love teaching this district, there are a bunch of great kids and a bunch of great parents. And I think this job, if you just come in every day enthusiastic and come in and show these kids what they can do and what's out there, the learning just takes care of itself, because they're interested.
Clearly, you've done that.
So thank you very much, I appreciate it very much.
Congratulations, Rob. Very, very well. I can put in my two cents. One of the pleasures of when I do walkthroughs with John and Mary Ann is going into classrooms like Rob's. And we could be in AP Economics, we can be in AGA, it doesn't matter the level of the student. Rob makes it happen, and you know, I heard you used real-world connections. That's what his class is all about. I've never been in a more dynamic, engaging math class, so.
Thank you.
Very well deserved.
Appreciate that.
Do you mind if I jump into? Just, I think those comments really hit the nail on the head, and Rob's very well deserving of this award. It was a few years ago that he came advocating to add economics, and I think you've taken your passion and your experience and recognized that this was a need for our kids. And the work of teaching one AP course is so significant, the research, the background, finding the resources, and getting the training to be ready to do it. He took on macroeconomics and then advocated to take on a whole brand-new course the next year, microeconomics, so that we're able to offer both with him rotating one course year after year. In two years, he's had 88 kids take this exam, averaging a 3.0 and then a 3.5 respectively. It's not only one of our most successful from an achievement standpoint, but it's our most populated AP course. It's the first one we've offered to sophomores. It matches up with our kids' interest in DECA. And when you walk into the class, I'm remembering in particular last year seeing kids getting ready for the test around a whiteboard, problem-solving, accessing their knowledge, collaborating. It looks like a college environment. It is empowering and exciting and everything that we want for our kids, and he deserves a ton of credit. So I'm thankful for the kind words on his behalf and just really feel like it's a great award and well-deserved, so congratulations.
Thank you, John. Yeah, thank you. I'm really happy that he let me teach the economics course because I was bugging him for a long time to do it, because I've always felt, just real quick, I always felt that the kids leave high school without any knowledge of economics. We're the number-one economy in the world, they have no idea how it works. When they leave my classes, they certainly understand how the politics and economics are all intertwined, and they can think through these problems. So it's a fun course, and let me, thank you for letting me teach it. I appreciate it.
It's great, too, because it's impacted the whole district, you know what I mean? It's like a whole layer that you've added at the high school level that kids can now look forward to and have a part of. So it's not just touching a few kids, it's touching a lot of kids, as John just said. So that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to old business.
So just as a status update, we discussed the whole statement of interest program through the MSBA. Jay and myself are in the process of filling out this crazy extensive survey having to do with the high school roof and the middle school. It's going to be a ways to plod through this, but we're hopeful for the February 6th meeting we'll have the surveys brought back to your attention, and then we'll take it from there. Plus, we still have to kind of interact a little bit more with the MSBA people with regard to whether the middle school projects would even be eligible. Okay?
So under the category of new business, we're going to table our first topic, which is the naming of the Misco Computer Lab. We had a series of students from Misco Student Council that we're going to present this evening, but illness has taken many. So we're going to table that to the next meeting and come back to that, and we'll move right up to the Merzey Makerspace pilot.
So some real exciting things going on throughout the district, but this really kind of speaks to really what we were just talking about with Rob as far as application and hands-on project-based learning. And something has emerged within, what would you say, the last two to three years? If that?
Yeah.
In carving out spaces known as Makerspaces, which is really dedicated to project-based learning, oftentimes using technology, so that kids can create. So I kick it to you to kind of talk about some of the work that you're leading in creating a pilot Makerspace at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair, and rest of the members of the school committee. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight. It's a very exciting project, and I'm fortunate to be joined by my co-chair in this project, Sidin Venkataraman. We have other members of the committee who could not be here today, including Allison Klisch, Kevin Campbell, Andrea Bosworth, Beth Hennessy, and
and Maureen Cohen, who has also been an active member. Oh, Barbara Hendricks, cannot leave her out. She's just been an instrumental person. So we've been able to put together a really diverse group of individuals who bring a multitude of perspectives into making this Makerspace a reality. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Makerspace as a pathway to a maker culture. And we're going to define these terms as we go along. But I see this Makerspace being situated in our one-to-one learning program. And from my observations of the last six months being here, we do a really excellent job with communication and collaboration and learning. But I want to focus on this word "innovative," which is an area that every district, including our own, can grow. And that's really at the heart of a Makerspace. How do we become an innovative, forward-thinking district where we can create these opportunities for students to have hands-on, relevant, real-world, project-based learning, taking what Rob's doing in his classroom and taking it to that next level? Always trying to reach that North Star. So I think what's important first is just to kind of talk a little bit about what is maker education. Hopefully, this will play right on the first click. But if not, I've got it backed up. So we'll just back up here for a second.
At its simplest, making is the act of creating. Making can spur creativity, curiosity, collaboration, and confidence. Consider what can happen when making becomes an integral part of learning. Maker education harnesses the power of making to create an engaging and motivating learning experience. It's an interactive, open-ended approach that is learner-driven and allows for the time and space needed to develop diverse skills, knowledge, and ways of thinking. At Maker Ed, we believe that the design of any learning opportunity must recognize and celebrate every learner's ability to experience and influence their world. Maker education can achieve this ideal because it embodies these core values and goals. Empowerment: Maker education focuses on a learner's capability to voice their unique thoughts, choices, and ideas. Access: It provides a spectrum of entry points for learners of any culture, background, or ability to take part. Process: Maker education emphasizes designing, reiterating, reflecting, and sharing as part of the universal process of learning and development. And community: It welcomes and values every learner as they are encouraged to share, collaborate, and engage with one another. Maker education allows us to move towards a more comprehensive educational approach that better reflects and incorporates the diverse, complex, and ever-changing nature of our world. Through maker education, imp develop new perspectives, a belief in their own abilities, and a passion for learning. Learn more about how we at Maker Ed support educators and organizations to create engaging learning experiences for youth through making.
So that gives a brief overview of just what Maker Ed could entail. So in October, John approached me with a generous gift from the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation, $1,000 targeted towards putting together a Makerspace. So how do we make Maker Ed come alive at Nittmuck High School? And so I put out a announcement. He asked Suzanne and myself to chair it, to recruit, make it an open process so that we would get a diverse group of perspectives from all disciplines. And the first thing we wanted to do is we wanted to sit down and put together a mission and vision. So why are we starting this? How is this going to look in our district? So our draft mission at this point, which we're still seeking feedback from, the committee and the faculty, is that we want to create the next generation of innovators, problem-seekers, and problem-solvers through collaboration, experimentation, and creation. That's our mission for this space. We want the students to be, and I think that one of the key words there is "problem-seekers," that the jobs of the future are going to be those people who have an entrepreneur's mindset, may not be entrepreneurs themselves, but can find either design flaws or issues within the community, both local, global, and not complain about them, but take action. So you go from problem-seekers to be problem-solvers. And we know that that's best done through collaboration, experimentation, and tinkering, and then finally, creation. And so what would the Makerspace look like if we had our ideal vision of what was going to be happening in this space? So we wanted to position it as like an inviting space where people from all sorts of backgrounds and educational experiences who would come in and treat it like a research and design lab powered by student passions and energy. We envision it being a space that's used continually throughout the day. And that's a catalyst to reimagine what the learning experience looks like at Nittmuck High School. How do we take what is already excellent and kick it into the next year for the 21st century? So that way, when colleges, universities, and employers think of Nittmuck Regional High School and the Menonupton Regional District, they know that we're not only academically sound, but also creative, thoughtful learners. So we thought the next step was to see how other sites were doing it. And we reached out to the Makerspace community through MasQ. Twitter's been a great resource. We've had some in-house connections here. And we visited seven sites last week. Lynnfield High School, Leslie University, C-Makerspace, which is presented at places like South by Southwest, a really innovative conference. We visited Burlington High School. We also visited a private space in Einstein's Workshop, which is in, we went to the site in Burlington, Massachusetts. We went to Hockington High School, Sharon High School. And Sharon, which was so hospitable, also took us to our middle school. So we could see what that looked like at the middle level as well. And so here's just a few images of what we found when we visited the space. You can see in the top-left corner, we've got an image of a 3D printer, which is common across all Makerspaces. What's really interesting is in the far-left-hand corner, there's a duct tape prom dress that a student put together. Barbara Hendricks, who is an avid sewing enthusiast, is really excited at her skill and expertise to bring textiles to our Makerspace. At the, I think it was Sharon? Sharon, the students make the costumes for the drama production in the Makerspace. So it's a great way to integrate curriculum, extracurricular activities, to make it inclusive. Suzanne Collins, who's a librarian at Sharon, is demoing several of the design challenges that you'll see across the rest of the row. These challenges provide an entry point for students to access to the Makerspace and give them something to do. Down the bottom row, Andrea Bosworth is looking at an Arduino board, which is used to code this. They call it the "love machine" because you would pinch a certain point on the board and the sensor would heat up depending on the temperature of your fingers. So there's the three lights. You've got some robotics in that second picture. In the third image down the bottom row, you've got a whiteboard, which seemed to be critical to all Makerspaces that centered as a place for collaboration, multiple iterations, erasing, and trying again. And then in the final picture down in the bottom-right-hand corner, that was taken at Burlington High School. They did, while they had one of the smaller Makerspaces, it was really incredible. They are doing some work with augmented reality where they had a landscape, a sandbox landscape. If you picked up the sand, the landscape would shift and increase, much like a topography map. And they were using it, connecting it to a computer, and of all things, an Xbox Kinect that was using it as their camera. So some really incredible things going on in different districts that we can borrow. A very supportive community. And I think that's a really outstanding aspect of maker education, is that it's interconnected and everybody shares with everyone. So we had four really big takeaways for what we learned from our visits. The first is that engaging prompts and challenges are crucial to getting students into the Makerspace. Unfortunately, Makerspaces are not like Field of Dreams. If you build it, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to come. Students sometimes arrive in the Makerspace not really sure how to use the tools and not really sure what to make. So a lot of schools do different challenges. Putting a little plug here, we're doing Maker Mondays here at Misco Hill Middle School. Our next one's next month. We're making paper circuitry lightsabers. So we're trying to give it a structured project for students to give them an entry point, and then they can tinker from there. Second big takeaway, Makerspaces are more frequently used when teachers are involved, so core curriculum teachers. If we can integrate maker projects into the Makerspace, that's been a key success for, or a key aim for a lot of the districts. Also, building in flexible times into the daily schedules. I believe it was Sharon that had about a 45-minute block, or Hockington that had a 45-minute block, where students were able to, you know, either go to the study hall, get student prep, and they would use the Makerspace during that period as well. Before and after school, lunchtimes are all other times when students would access the Makerspace in addition to side projects that they're working on. Our third big takeaway is that this is a collaborative effort. While they're, almost all of the Makerspaces that we visited were situated in the library, the IT teacher or the person who's in charge of the help desk played a crucial role in bringing teachers in, providing the technological support. Rob's got the content knowledge, and then we get the teacher with the technology knowledge. So each one can focus on their strengths and create really dynamic, interesting projects for the students. It's also a way to empower students. Help desk students can help their peers with a technology piece of it, where students, you know, may be skilled in math or ELA or writing. These students can provide their technical knowledge on how to navigate the space. And then finally, this was a big takeaway from Leslie, is keep your buy list short and let student interest in curriculum projects drive the purchases. There's a tendency for groups to spend money and buy things that they don't use little bit. So across the board was a item that many Makerspaces invested in, didn't quite get utilized. So you want to aim for kind of pinch points. So if students are demanding, we don't have enough, you know you've done a really good job. And that's how you figure out what you need. So the potential resources that we think that we're probably going to need just based off of the challenges that we're seeing that we could design for students and what's common across the board. So a 3D printer. We're fortunate enough to have several here at Misco Hill. We'd love to bring one into the high school as well. And not just to print, because I think there's value in learning how a printer works, but also integrating with the curriculum have a reason for using the printer. Desktop computers for digital media programming, green screen productions, high-quality film productions, also any sort of, you know, photoshopping, digital media creation. Arduino boards for coding. A Raspberry Pi, which I happen to have one looking to here. This is a small mini-computer that sits in the palm of your hand. It functions, I don't know if you're all familiar with it. Actually, unfortunately, the demo wouldn't work, but you can connect it to a speaker system and you can create an Amazon Echo or DAW. So teaching students how to program this little computer to do really incredible things. Sewing machines, which we happen to have a volunteer who's willing to donate quite a few. But I think it will be a great resource for to attract a different type of student to the space. A Sphero robot. This is a little bit more high-end. It was a Christmas gift. This is the BB-8 droid. We have some here at the Misco Middle School. We've got, they're usually a little more transparent. We use these to program. And the robots are given little tasks or little challenges that they, just teaches students how to program and logic. And then finally, and I think most importantly, what we're going to need is community support. And that's going to take three different levels. First of all, teaching members of the community sharing their knowledge with the students. You know, drawing people into Nittmuck, seeing the great work that goes on, and feeling like they're a part of it. Infrastructure support. So, you know, just like I mentioned, we've got a volunteer who's willing to donate the sewing machines. Are there companies, are there groups who have access to the technology that we need that can provide that for us? And then finally, financial. There are going to be some things that, you know, we don't have access to, but we'll need, you know, a little additional funding. Groups have really been getting on board. I think John was, the Class of 2016 has donated to this. Suzanne has been generous enough to help get us off the ground with some items. And, you know, the Blackstone Education, Blackstone Valley Education Foundation has played a critical role. So the more community support, the more ownership. We're going to debut some stuff at the I-级. We're really excited. But at the end goal, what we're really aiming for here is a Nittmuck major culture. We don't want it just to stay in the library, media center, wherever it ends up. We want it to permeate across Nittmuck and to make it maker education across the curriculum. So we're in the early stages. We're still, you know, getting off the ground. But we appreciate the opportunity to present where we think we're heading and look forward to sharing the progress with you in the months and years ahead.
Fantastic. Absolutely amazing. Hundred percent supported. I think it's absolutely phenomenal. Do you have a space in mind? Because I know you want it to permeate and eventually kind of move outside. But is it going to start in Nittmuck's library?
Yes.
Or Media Resource Center?
We have a couple zones planned out. We hope to start piloting almost immediately as soon as we start getting some artifacts. And then I think you're going to see initially, if you enter into the library, we've got a little cove right immediately to the right where we have some bookshelves and we've got some shelving where we can, you know, kind of put some items and then just kind of expand the difference as far as the library. Suzanne has just--
From the reference, in the reference section, I've been reading a lot of the reference books out and then taking the ones that we're going to keep, putting them in the stacks with the regular books. So that way, there's all these shelves where we could store bins and stuff like that. And then putting some round tables so that it's like a little section. It'll be nice.
That's great.
Suzanne has been wonderful in thinking flexibly about how we can reimagine this space and really get this off the ground, so couldn't do without it.
At first I was a little negative, but after going there, I was like, I'm going home now.
Oh yeah, I mean, it's, I think, I can speak confidently for the group, that going and seeing them really crystallized it and seeing what's possible. And then you start envisioning it in our own space. So we're really excited and we look forward for you to come in and try some things out and learn from our students.
Has, because this is going to be a pilot or it's currently in a pilot situation? Have students been introduced to it? Did they go with you on any of the site visits or?
So we have talked, that's a great question.
What involvement are they having in the creation?
So our first meeting was the, we have a NIMU Student Technology Advisory Committee that took place before the site visits. Unfortunately, it conflicted with a lot of after-school activities, so we didn't get to turn out that we wanted. We're going to be using the students who were in the I-级 last year as kind of our point people as well as the tech team. They'll play an integral role because again, it's their interest that are going to drive this. You know, the project that I was talking about with the Amazon Alexa, we're going to be taking to the student help desk team, they're going to be kind of our tastemakers. And because as they learn, they can share with their peers and play an instrumental role in, you know, building that maker culture.
Is there a lot of excitement online, the students that know about this pilot program yet or?
I think it's still in its infancy. I think it's still in its infancy. I think we, we're excited because we've been there, we've seen it. The students I talked to are aware of it. We can do more and we will do more to ensure that they, I mean, they're equal partners in this with us to, again, you know, the key takeaway is that they're going to tell us what we need because, you know, we don't want to invest in anything that they're not going to use.
Will there be PD involved as far as the staff go to help connect it to?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I will be at the forefront of that, working with Ms. Bosworth and the tech team to make sure that we get what we need.
Is the goal to replicate this at the middle and elementary levels as well?
I don't want to speak for anything. This is just, this is just the pilot at the, at the high school. You know, and we've got really capable educators at both levels who have various and even more extensive experience in this than myself. I think I'm just trying to do my, you know, my little part with the Maker Mondays in this project, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise me if this is going to, I would, I would hope it would.
So can you tell me, because I hadn't heard of, and maybe this is just me being asleep sometimes, but Maker Mondays, can you tell me about that at Misco?
Sure.
And you've explained the project, but when exactly does that happen?
So it just, it.
Well, I didn't mean that. I meant like when during the school day?
So this emerged out of one of the coffee talks that I gave with Mrs. Mike. We, we're thinking about how do we create a space for parents and students to work together around technology? And we talked about how, you know, sometimes in the winter months, there's not always a lot going on. The spring gets really, really busy. So how do we create something in the winter months that's a little unique to how to bring the maker culture to Mendon Upton? And this just kind of came to mind. So we've been sending out notices through the Connect Five. We've got, I think we've got about 15 people signed up for it, but hopefully with this plug, we'll get a little bit more. We capped at 30. So we have pizza and drinks at the beginning for the parents and the students, and then they will go through a maker project and it will have one of these Mondays a month, usually towards the end, running opposite of the school committee meeting so that everybody can attend.
Okay, great.
Next, next Monday, if you're around, we'd love to have it.
Okay, thank you. That's wonderful. Good stuff.
Something that, I went to a presentation last Thursday and the keynote presenter was a gentleman by the name of Bill Daggett, who is kind of an educational theorist. He's also a futurist and was talking about how much more we need to do to really prepare our kids for the 21st century. That, you know, his supposition was this, that our best schools really have mastered the 20th century education. If you really think about that, you know, us are on this table, we went to school, what, in the 70s and 80s? I know we're all still very young.
Worse.
But even in a lot of outstanding school districts, the delivery of education is not dramatically different from what we got 30-plus years ago. So the idea is, what are we doing to have kids actually create and innovate? And you used a term, and I got to be 100% honest, up until last Thursday, I never knew what this term meant, augmented reality. What is augmented reality? Think, I'm going to give you two words, Pokemon Go. That is what augmented reality is all about, mixing the virtual world with the real world. Daggett's prediction is, within the next five years, augmented reality is going to enter education. So think about where we've been in the last five years with things like one-to-one and online learning. All the companies like your Pearson's, they're going to hop on the augmented reality bus, so to speak. Think about though, what are we doing with regard to our kids to know? How does that work? How do you program that? How do you code that? I think part of what we're striving for is again, preparing our kids to be the next generation of innovators. So hats off.
And if I may build up that one item, which may be on our radar, is something called a Sprout, which enables you to see a 3D image of organs and it's used in the medical sector to, you know, really bring the different aspects of the anatomy to life. You can take really high-definition images of your hand. There, it's, you know, it takes a piece of paper and turns it into something that is rather incredible. Actually, I included that video. But, you know, to your point, you know, there's really some incredible learning experiences that come out of this space and we look forward to seeing what happens.
Great. Well, thank you for kind of sphereheading it and watching it grow and helping it grow.
Thank you.
Our next topic, approving the 2017-18 school year calendar.
So you have in your packet a draft of the 17-18 school calendar. Pretty straightforward. We don't have anything to the effect of election days or anything to throw a monkey wrench in the works, so to speak. So we have this slated as students reporting on August 30th, Wednesday, the 30th of this year. And day 180 would be June 14th of 2018. And then the 185th day would be the 21st of June. Very straightforward. All of the vacations are intact along with the holidays and the typical PD days.
Did we get that in the packet?
I was just looking through. I didn't see it in.
Oh, it wasn't included in the packet?
No.
No.
I apologize.
And the dates from May meetings are not correct.
Our annual town meeting is the 4th.
Oh, okay, maybe I have it wrong.
Yours should be the 10th.
Yeah, the annual, 5/7 says annual town meeting. It should say annual town election. And the annual town meeting is 5/10.
Right. The dates are right, it's just what they do is reversed.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Do you want to just table this to the ninth seat? I apologize.
So we're going to eliminate the organization, the organization, have a more appreciation eliminated. That Friday as well.
Absolutely. And school will occur on December 25th.
All right.
Yeah, we can table that. We need a motion to table it or just we just?
Just table it.
Okay. Okay, we'll come back to that. The next topic is the approval of the bus contract.
So also, you should have had in your packet.
We did.
The, the proposed contract with Telstone and Sons. It would be the bus contract of FY 18 through FY 20 with a two-year extension option of FY 21 and FY 22. The proposed increase of the current FY 17 and FY 18 is approximately a 7% increase. Anything that you want to add to that?
No. Pretty much we had one bid and it's pretty much in line with what they've done in the past. They raised the price 20 bucks a route every year. There's no gas escalators or fuel escalators. It's actually up 15 a day from this current year to next year. But there was a fairly dramatic increase in the smaller buses from 315 to 370, so that's a little higher. But all in all, you know, I still think they're being reasonable with us in every way, shape or form. I've seen other prices through the business managers list serve, what other districts are paying and we're right in line with everybody else. We recently went out to bid for the Norfolk Aggie run that we administer now through the super tenants consortium and it was, I think, 396 a day. So that's a much different route than this. So, you know, it is what it is, I guess. I would love to see some competition.
It is frustrating because we do put out the RFP. I think we advertise it as aggressively as we can. When we have the pre-bid hearing, we typically will get three or four companies that show up. But I don't want to use the C-word, so to speak, but what appears is they come to kind of see what the competition is, but only the existing contractor actually bids and comes for a bid. And let's just say that that experience is not unique to Mendon Upton. I talked to my colleagues all throughout the Blackstone Valley and it's pretty consistent.
Actually, through the business managers list, sir, that question was asked, how many bids did you get? And I don't believe any district answered and said they had more than one bid throughout the state. Now, don't get me wrong, Telstone does a great job for us. I think we're happy with the company and I think they do a really good job. But as far as the pricing structure, I don't think they're gouging us, but I think competition would help control some of those prices a little bit. And it just doesn't seem to be any way to get that to happen. You know, they, each company kind of can handle what they can handle and they're just not going to try to take somebody else's territory away. And there's no out-of-state companies coming in at this point because they just can't compete. The out-of-state companies in the past came in and they were 70, 80 hours a day more. So they just said, okay, I guess we can't compete here.
So it's kind of territorial.
Yeah, it's very territorial. It's very provincial. You, you know, we, in the past, we've gotten suggestions of why don't you aggressively try to court Laidlaw or First Student or one of those national companies? First off, like Jay said, one year we did get a bid from First Student and it was dramatically higher than Telstone. But also, you know, working in a previous district that did deal with Laidlaw, you're not necessarily dealing with somebody local. You know, when you've got a problem, you're calling a 1-800 number that may be going to Arizona. And if you have an issue, you know, with a bus on, you know, in a cul-de-sac in Upton, the last, you know, you want to be able to reach out and talk to somebody local. So it's a challenging situation, but, you know, I think it's one of those situations, it is what it is. We know exactly what we're getting in dealing with Telstone and Sons.
So do we know what drove the cost increase? Because I would have thought three years ago, we signed into a contract with gas prices almost 30 to 35% higher than where they're at right now. I would tell you, in all the years that I've been here and dealing with Telstone, they go up $20 a year. And it doesn't really matter about fuel costs or anything else, they just go up $20 a year. They tell me that today, and I heard this from two or three different companies, the biggest driver for their costs is finding bus drivers for starters and then because of some of the conditions of the Affordable Care Act and some other things, they now have to pay for certain things they didn't used to have to. And it's difficult to find people that are willing to work the hours that they need to work at the pay that they can afford to pay them. So that's one of the reasons you don't get other bids is companies don't, they can't get the drivers. You know, like another company comes in and says, all right, we're going to take over Mendon Upton, we need 30 drivers, but they can't find them unless they hire the drivers that are already here. And there's a lot of goofy things, but I don't think it really, I mean, I didn't ask for a detailed analysis, what's your cost for leases or any of that stuff. They lease their buses. They are required to have buses that are five years older or newer, you know, five years old or newer, that are required to house them in town. I know Telstone owns a piece of property down by the Mendon Fire Department and they keep all their stuff there. They have a garage there. They are local. The person that kind of coordinates for the district has been doing that for the last five or six companies we've had in this district. So she knows the routes and she knows the area. Like I said, I personally, I like Telstone. I think they do a good job for us. I just think that competition-wise, it's always better if you have some competition when it comes to pricing and stuff. I mean, it's always good to go out and get three or four prices when you try to buy anything. That way you know that you're getting a good deal. And the reality is, although I think we're getting a decent deal compared to other districts, you never know because we're not getting that competitive bidding process really. Understood. Go start our own bus company. There are districts that lease their own buses and hire their drivers, but you've got to remember you're going to hire your drivers and pay their health insurance.
Plus you also have to pick up all the maintenance expenses.
Buses and.
And you have to manage all the staff as well.
And generally, this is something you want to contract out, I think. I don't think we want to get into the bus company business. Maybe we do. Maybe we want to start a bus company. It's a side business. What about a job?
Okay, so we have one bid. So we're looking to approve the contract.
Correct.
Then I need, I need you to sign, I actually probably have a cleaner copy for you to sign if you want to come in like tomorrow or something, than like a scanned copy here.
Okay.
If you can do that, stop in sometime this week.
Okay.
Yeah, that does look pretty good. Where'd you get that one?
Laura gave it to me. Maybe you would like to take that one.
Here, I'll bring this to you. So you can sign this one and you don't have to take another trip.
We have to take a vote first.
Yeah.
Details, details.
So do you have a motion to approve the new contract for Telstone?
Make a motion to approve the new contract for Telstone?
Okay. Any further discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm aye. Joe, do we have any correspondences?
Two correspondences in your packet. One is an invite from Perry Davis, who is the executive director of MARS or the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. On St. Patrick's Day morning at 8:30 is the annual MARS legislative breakfast. I've reached out to our four legislators, asking them if they intend on going. I've been to it in years past and I know a couple of our members in the past have gone through it. It's a nice way in a informal setting to kind of press the flesh and bring up issues particularly around regional transportation and now also the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So something to keep in mind, if you could fit it in your schedule, just let me know. I do intend on going. And then the second piece of correspondence is just a formal request from the paraprofessionals union to begin the collective bargaining agreement.
Do we have any other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours? Okay. Our future agenda items include emergency first pass budget on February 6th and we're going to need a roll call to executive session motion this evening.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting to enter executive session via roll call vote pursuant to mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21A, exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Mendon Upton Regional Teachers Association. The committee will not return to open session.
Wait a second. Seven. Okay. All those in, it's roll call vote, correct? All those, we start with George. Jane Dethna, Hannah Jingoa.
We mark and I.
Roll is aye or aye?
Okay, so at 8:08, we are adjourned to executive session. We thank you everybody for coming.